So, before we start with the regular, we'll do the minutes. Start in first agenda on the salary ordinance. We had an administrative meeting before and Mr. Schwartz Trooper, who was guiding the meeting, will give us some comment.
Sure, thank you. As Tony mentioned, we had an administrative meeting, which is allowed under the open door law for certain types of situations. We were speaking specifically with the State Board of Accounts relative to public funds held for the benefit of the Tourism Commission or the Visitors Commission. So, it's a non-public meeting, but it is something that's allowed under the statute. And out of that meeting, I'm requesting a couple of things that come before this board for, I guess, for a vote. The first of which would be that all funds currently outside the county that were, that are taxed under that specific Indiana code provision, that those funds come into the county and be held in Fund 1127 by the auditor. And then I would also request that we proceed with modifying a handful of ordinances and processes to accomplish the goals of that meeting. That's my request.
Okay. Oh, if you can repeat all that here.
Bring funds in-house, number one.
I make a motion to bring funds in-house and then all the different processes to get everything coordinated per Mr. Schwartz and Trooper.
Thank you.
I can second that.
First by Matt, second by Tom, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Tony, I'm gonna stand because I didn't make the meeting this morning.
Okay. My club stings and obviously Marilyn not here. Before we get anything, as we discussed in there, both groups do a really good job for the county. They do a lot for the county, very appreciative of what they get done. So hats off to both and we'll get contracts and everything worked out well. Okay. Didn't know if anyone had a chance to look at the meeting minutes of February the 8th? If so, and there are no corrections or additions, I'll take a motion to approve.
I move to approve.
I'll second that.
Motion by Tom, second by Matt, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up, salary ordinance amendment. There's the judge.
Thank you for having me first on the agenda. The request is for some overtime from a head court reporter dating from the last of last year and the first quarter of this year. As you know, you approved a new position for us. We are training that person up. We were able to hire them right away. That's a process that adds to the work a little bit. And I would hope, we'd also talk about overtime as an alternative to additional positions and those kind of things. I would see that lessening as we go forward, as we get folks trained up and, but anyway, I think it's $2,140 plus the tax, Social Security and Medicare.
Judge, what period does it actually cover? I couldn't, I don't actually remember what we did last time.
It was from the last quarter of last year and this through now. So we had the new hire January 1. I don't know what the first work date is because I don't have the calendar out, but that's what the effective date was for that.
Similar to the last one.
Like five months worth, you're saying, or?
Yes.
Okay.
Any questions for the judge? Motion to approve from anyone?
All moved.
I didn't see, hear who. Okay. First by Mike, second?
I can second it.
By Tom, Darren was getting ready too, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Glad you could get first and get back at it. Next, Visitors Bureau Annual Report.
Everybody's doing well. As previously stated, we just had an administrative discussion and meeting. Certainly, things are changing and it's all good. But I wanted to give you a quick report. This is part of the ordinance to do an annual report and I wanted to give you an update. Having not done one and having, it's been quite a while, I imagine, since you've had one, I wanted to touch on some things. And I'm gonna first just kinda give you the status of our financial health and wellbeing in terms of what we've collected. So far year-to-date, we've collected $275,808.85. Our annual budget was $333,800. So currently, where we're trending, we're trending to have a surplus over and above our budget, around $415,000 is what we're tracking, what we might collect. But I'll make sure you have a copy of this. In terms of what it's been like since I've seen you last, as you know, our fiscal year runs July 1st through the end of June. And when we prepare our budgets, we actually are requested to prepare those and then get those submitted as the county does their budgets in September. So I presented a budget to you last year and when you look at the line items on the budget, and again in our discussions, we're gonna revisit that, take another look at that as you know. But what we've done so far is when we did the budget, you know, obviously we talked about the relationship with the Chamber of Commerce that's been the operator, manager, administrator with the help of the commission. We put in there, we had a contract with the Chamber of Commerce, we asked for the increase. We didn't do that. Those dollars were redirected back into the Special Projects Fund. So that's still there. But in terms of the sports, recreational tourism, corporate tourism, agribiz, livestock tourism, and all those things, we are doing those expenditures and promoting and investing in those event planners such as event assistance and such. But we've done a good job. When you think about tourism, it could be the simplest thing as supporting your local basketball youth program. Like, we just had three tournaments in the county, for example. And the Washington Shootout, the Hatchet Classic, and the Storm the Court at Barreeve. Those three tournaments alone that just happened in February brought in over 15,000 visitors to our community. We recently just had the Davies County Construction Show. They don't have the final numbers yet, but that's an investment that I've made to be able to support that event, but they estimate four to 5,000 people that came in that day and a half. It was, the Garden Club does their show. There's several events throughout the year and we've got some other events coming up. Always September's a busy month, but April's become that month for us with our annual Wine and Brew Fest. And if you haven't seen the announcement, it's gonna be a rockin' Wine and Brew Fest this year. And it's gonna bring some wonderful guests and people and entertainers and certainly food truck vendors and all the sorts to downtown Washington. We've done, we budgeted 5,000 for Discover Downtown. That was earmarked specifically, if you remember what I said last time I was here, was not just Discover Downtown Washington, but also our friends at the Olden Business Alliance and what we can do to promote downtown. And there's some neat things happening with that organization. You heard about, those that were there this morning heard about a little bit of that. But what that group is doing is really good for downtown, but there's other things happening throughout the county. When we talk about tourism, it was asked this morning, they didn't say it specifically like this, but what is tourism? Tourism's defined a lot of ways, right? Is it a quality-of-place investment? Does that draw people to your community? Well, I think we could all agree the Commons Project is a quality-of-place that helps our locals, but also brings people to our community. So I think that promotes tourism. When you think about sports recreation, when you look at what we're known for, the historic Hatchet House and all the great traditions at Barreeve and North Davies and Washington Catholic and the Birdcage, you know, sports and soccer and baseball at Chuck Harmon. Thousands of people come here each year. And when you look at the economic impact it has, whether it be the Wine and Brew Fest or our sports tournament, the number that's used is roughly $100 per visitor. I'll give you an example. Anybody ever heard of Grand Park in Westfield, Indiana? Grand Park is this Taj Mahal, one of the best venues in the country. They bring in 1.6 million visitors a year and they estimate the economic impacts $160 million to the area. So when you look at that model and that formula, when you look at the events that we do, it could be Dinkie's Auction, it could be, we just had the recent event with the Amish Farm Days there, the Horse Progress Days. That event alone brought 20,000 people. Then you look at the White River Antique, what they bring. And so, we're excited because what we're doing now, we're building out foundationally how we promote who we are. You might've seen the stickers out there, and if you don't have one, I'll be glad to give you one, the Davies Made Campaign. That really celebrates our skilled trades industry, our products and services being produced right here in Davies County. This was a project that we're promoting. The Chamber of Commerce took the lead on it, but you know, it's something we wanna support because it is another thing that promotes tourism. The Crane Regional Defense Group, you know, that's something that I've invested in from the chamber standpoint, I wanna invest in from a visitor bureau because that speaker series, what they do there to support the defense industry, brings people to our county. And subsequently, what they do is they pump gas into their car, they eat our food, they visit our shops. But we're supporting the defense industry and while it may not seem like a festival or a farmer's market, what it is, it's a different level of tourism that promotes our county. And those are the type of organizations that I feel we should support. Obviously, the great announcement about the microelectronics, what that's gonna do for our community. So when you look at tourism, tourism is what gets you to get in your car and drive somewhere to participate, whether it be food, festival, shopping, or anything just to get out of the house. So the whole goal is, is that in Davies County, that we have a collaborative effort. And I think we have some great organizations that are doing all these things, coming together to be able to sell the message. So obviously, we need a vision, we need a plan, we need a strategy. And there's all kinds of ways to do it, right? It could be a fieldhouse, it could be a conference center, it could be a number of things. But the reality of it is, is that us getting the resolution to increase our innkeeper's taxes, giving us the financial wherewithal to be able to consider what we are, who we are, and how we're gonna market that. And that's been exciting. So not having a, I'll provide you the financials, as you know, we discussed earlier, we're gonna re-submit and submit to that. But what I will say is that when you look at the last three major events we've been a part of outside the local area, the Cincinnati, Louisville, and Indianapolis sport boat and camping or RV shows, we're out there selling our brand. You know, you're gonna see in our line items that we've spent money on visual displays, marketing pieces, guides, we keep going into more guides and how we display who we are. We wanna be at these events. And in August, we're at the State Fair for one day with 14 other vendors with Indiana Tourism and promoting who we are. It's kinda like, when you have an opportunity to participate and you're one of 14, for example, at the State Fair, and there's thousands of people on that Sunday that's there, when we're one of the ones there presenting who we are, it's worth that $2,000 investment. And our great partners at Wes Boggs, you know, they participate in these events with us too. And thousands of people come by and, you know, may not think a whole lot about it when you go to an expo, when you stop by that booth, and maybe you like the little trinket. So if you haven't had a chance, you know, we promoted with some koozies and the floatable keychains, and we're trying to promote this sports and recreation. If you saw our displays, you know, the camping, the fishing, the recreation, which is like pickleball, golf. It could be water sports, camping, the things that we already know, it's the low-hanging fruit that we can sell, but it's developing the other unique proposition for our community, which I'm real excited about what Discover Downtown Washington's doing, possibilities of wall murals and facade grants and all these wonderful things to make us better and to give our friends and neighbors and others from outside communities to come here and check us out. So if you have any questions, I'll answer any questions you have. I've got my financials with me and I can answer those questions if you had anything specifically speaking.
Do you have a copy of those financials for us?
Yeah, I have, what I'll give to you today, I can tell you that, I'll give you what we've collected so far in innkeeper's tax. And I can present, I can give a copy of our financials year-to-date.
Just give it to the auditor, she can.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? How are we doing?
Good.
You see us, we're trying to put it out there and we have a lot of work to do and we're trying to get better. So hopefully, we'll see you at our events and if you ever need anything, please call our office. I got a great staff with Jenny and Crystal and they're working real hard and got two great boards trying to do the right thing. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you, Joe.
Next, we have the Discover Downtown Washington Quick Impact for Cod Grant, Jeremy and Bryant.
Jeremy looks a little different today.
What the heck, Brian?
Morning, everybody.
Not for the better or what?
Yeah, yeah, I don't know, yeah. It's all in the eye of the beholder, right? No, Jared, Jeremy is here, but he has to skip, he may have to skip out a little early. So I was gonna be here anyway, talking with you all about our friends from Strongbox with the Microelectronics Project up north, so thought I would cover and talk a little bit about Discover Downtown Washington. So to give you all a little bit of context, we had Jeremy and some members of the board with Discover Downtown Washington, started with the City Council this past Monday and then the County Commissioners on Tuesday, talking about our Quick Impact Facade Grant Program. So this is something, our board really came together, I would say about this time this past year, came together and got incorporated as a nonprofit with the IRS, with the State of Indiana in the summer of this past year, right? So since then, we have been working very closely with the Office of Community and Rural Affairs, with the Indiana Main Street Program to align with their goals and objectives with the National Main Street Program, specifically focused on revitalizing downtown Washington. And that follows the four-point approach, which is organization, design, economic vitality, and promotions. There we go. Got our four. So we have those four committees and we have a board of directors. Many from our board are actually here today, several from our board. We have Dusty Davis, who is the board chair and our fearless leader with the organization, Jeremy Adams, obviously myself, I sit on the board, Joe Morris just left, Dwayne Shake, we have Beth Gabhart, Greg Deves, Shelley Brinson, Mary Smith, the list goes on, right? We have a really good group of folks representing various interests with downtown, obviously myself from the economic development, community development standpoint. We have business owners, downtown merchants, we have developers, investors, and property owners, which really helps us to formulate that vision for what we want downtown Washington to be. And obviously with the amazing things that are happening downtown under the city's leadership with the Commons Project and other efforts, we really wanted to come out of the gate with this Quick Impact Facade Grant Program. If you look at successful Main Street programs across the state, many of them have a facade grant program. And I know actually in the past, Washington used to have one that was funded by the Office of Community and Rural Affairs. I think that funding was depleted, I wanna say in 2015 or so. That program actually went away. But if you look around, you know, Jasper, Ben Sins, you know, many of the communities around us, they have a pretty robust facade grant program. Now, that was something, like I mentioned, the board wanted to start out with. The challenge there is you really have to have a good set of guidelines, architectural guidelines, that say, hey, this is what we want to see downtown, right? These are the improvements that need to be made to your buildings to align with the historical integrity of that building, right? We don't have that at this point, but we also wanted to sustain the momentum of the organization and come out with a low-investment, but high-impact grant program. What we're talking about is $3,500, up to $3,500, one-to-one match. We worked very closely, the board worked very closely with the Economic Vitality Committee, which I chair, worked very closely with the Design Committee to come together on putting these parameters together. You all should have a copy of the proposed application along with you. The idea is that we would be able to fund about 10 different micro grants essentially. And the way we came up with the $3,500 is essentially in working with Greg Deves, who I think is our resident expert when it comes to painting, you know, he's with Sherman Williams downtown. He said it's about $7,000 roughly to paint a facade, right, a single facade downtown, which is what we were shooting for. So this is a way for us to get some money quickly out into our downtown, right, to leverage some private investment along with that. But low investment from the city and from the county to get that high impact. In the meantime, we will be working on that larger facade program. We just didn't wanna wait, you know, a year, year and a half for that program, you know, that study to be done, to roll out a program and really start to see some change. So our request in front of you today is $20,000 from the county. Jeremy, Dusty helped me out with the County Commissioners meeting this past week. I think they discussed edit, right? Is that where they discussed the funding coming from? The city took the lead and they approved it out of their edits, like I said, this past week, Commissioners as well. And we're here in front of you to make that same request. So last but certainly not least, it's a reimbursement grant. So the methodology's pretty, pretty simple, right? We're gonna roll these out on a rolling basis. Our grant committee will meet monthly to review the grant applications that we get in. We'll make decisions based on the information provided to us. And then they have to do the work, provide us with, you know, proof that the work was completed, receipts, invoices, things of that nature, and then we'll provide the reimbursement. So, any questions?
Everything has to be approved in advance.
Yep.
It can't be back walls, back doors, it has to be where it's visible, facing the street.
Correct. Yes, correct. Yep, only facing a public right-of-way. So primarily that front facade of a building. And also only properties within the Discover Downtown Washington district that we have, which is actually off of Main Street a bit, but it generally follows the city's historic district that was put in place.
We have that, Matt. Yeah, we have it in there and it kinda goes with the Commons Project too, so we're cleaning that up and then we're bringing the Commons together. So for me, it's a great, it's an easy investment for me, out of edit funding.
Perfect.
I would make the motion to give $20,000 to Discover Downtown Washington for their request, out of their edit funds.
Have a motion by Matt?
I'll second it. Quick question. County shares 20,000.
Yep.
What's the city's?
City's shares 20,000 as well.
20 awesome.
Yeah, yeah. So we have 40,000, thank you for that, Mike. So 35,000 would go towards the program, 5,000 in operational costs, right, just for administering the program. But yeah, it would generally give us the ability to do 10 grants, possibly more than that if folks request less.
And can we give periodic updates on how that's going?
Absolutely, yeah. We'd be happy to.
I would like to hear that.
One thing, and I'm fully supportive of this, but I saw a news story, I can't remember if it's, I read it in the Times Herald or saw TV something about it yesterday, and two gentlemen who were here mentioned that the county was going to be involved in that. And we hadn't met yet in approval request. So I personally, if you're gonna say the county's gonna be involved in it, you need to be sure you've got your, 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 everything in a row that we've approved. We ran that before with the Commissioners saying they're committing us to something and.
We've had an issue where the Commissioners committed and we did not.
Sure, sure.
Two county government bodies, so I'm fully supportive of it.
Yeah.
But I just wanna, you know, in the future, be sure you know you've got our support before you say the county is involved in something.
We do apologize for that. That was something, so.
And I know the media can sometimes jump the gun too. I know how that works.
Good friends with the media.
I have media experience, so.
Make sure you know that came from that end of the table.
No, no.
Think it's print media down where I saw that yesterday, not, so.
No, you're loud and clear, Mike.
Very good point, because there has been an instance in the past.
Sure, sure.
And the city has approved theirs.
The city has approved theirs, the County Commissioners have, but obviously for it to be binding, yes, we need your approval as well, so.
I had my say.
Good say.
It's a good point.
Very, yes.
So we still go back to the fact Matt had a first?
Yep.
Tom had a second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
All right.
You know?
The program, thank you.
Thank you so much. We will provide you all with updates and you should be seeing more information. Really, our plan is to launch the program anytime. Everything is ready to go. We just wanted to, obviously made sure we have your support, so, thank you.
You just will, you just will stay there, I believe.
That's fine, yeah.
I think Grant will probably participate in this, but we'll go ahead and talk about the real estate side of the Westgate Strongbox Project.
That is right. So I'm gonna throw on my different hat. So that was the Discover Downtown Board Member Hat. This is the Executive Director of the Davies County Economic Development Corporation Hat. So you all have heard me a lot the past few months, right, as it relates to the Westgate One Microelectronics Project up north. Today, you're gonna hear from the real masterminds behind the project, Paul Kite and Lindsay Phipps with Strongbox Commercial. They are the developer on the project and they have just been absolutely tremendous to work with over the past, I think we've been working together for about a year and a half, right? If not longer. So, so yeah, this is obviously a fantastic project for the county, for the region, and for the state. When I was actually in London this past week on a trade delegation with the IEDC, this project was discussed more than anything else. I feel like there's a lot of excitement, especially with what's happening in the UK and the relationship with the State of Indiana as it relates to semiconductors and, you know, advancing that technology. Trusted semiconductors, right? Making sure that that technology isn't in our adversary's hands and is done, you know, here locally and with our partners. So it's really, really timely, what we're discussing. And what you have in front of you today is the real property tax abatement request from Strongbox Commercial. So what we have been discussing the past few months is the personal property tax abatement for the four operating companies on the project, Enhanced Semiconductors, Everspin Technologies, Trusted Semiconductor Solutions, and Reliable Microsystems. Today, for all of that to happen, right, we have to have a building. And that is what the Strongbox team has been working on. So with that, I'm gonna welcome them up to just give a little bit of background on the project and take it from there. Paul?
Great.
Yeah? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Gentlemen, it's a pleasure to be here. I think we've, I met a lot of you guys either virtually or in person, so here I am again. Paul Kite with Strongbox Commercial, Lindsay Phipps is with me, she's our Vice President of Development. We've been working pretty aggressively trying to get this in front of you for this request. The building, so this is the first building of what I believe will be several in the Westgate Park. We have, we're already working on two or three other buildings that are being discussed. I would say that this is 25% of what is being currently proposed for microelectronics at Westgate, in addition to other programs that the Navy's pursuing to be in this area. So this particular building, while it's shown as 100,000, it's already 125,000. We've already added, we're planning an additional 25,000 of office space, which I think is particularly good for this discussion because that office space will bring more permanent employees and a lot of companies that aren't even committed to being in the production area wanna be in the building because of what's going on in the area and wanna be part of the program in future buildings to be manufacturing space. So at this point, we are, we, in addition to Structure Point, which is the engineer, the primary engineer, the Enhanced has brought in an additional engineer that, from Phoenix, that is the national best engineer for designing clean room space. So we have, that is ongoing, the clean room space is being finalized. So I'm hoping that we're starting, we have to start really by June, we need to be under construction to meet the Navy's requirement for this facility to be active. So I know that you've heard from us both for tax abatement, we've also talked a lot about tax increment financing, that with the interest rate environment that has caused us to shift just to tax abatement because it just, it reduces so much the principal that would be going into the building if we were to do a TIF. Now, I think in the future, as more buildings come along, we'll come back and talk about TIFs for other buildings, but at this point, we just wanna pursue the tax abatement. I'm blabbering on, so. If we have questions, you wanna talk about it, I do believe that the jobs number shown on this is a little light, that there will be more jobs than that, especially with this, the new news that we need to add 25,000 square feet to the building. So that'll raise, that'll raise the increment, which is good in the long run for the county. I wanna say that working with Brian and the Economic Development Team has been great. You guys have been super responsive, you know, sometimes he's putting meetings together on less than 24 hours' notice as information comes and you guys have been super responsive too. So, thank you.
Appreciate that. Appreciate everything you're doing.
Yeah.
Grant?
So.
Go over here.
Sure.
Oh, you got a mic?
Got a mic here. In the past, you all approved the personal property abatement and you knew, based on the timeline that we talked about then, that this was gonna be presented at this m- the timeline that we talked about then, that this was gonna be presented at this meeting and going forward for the future. So you can see the details in your statement of benefits and the real estate improvements, tremendous project, a lot of money is gonna be spent. This is the first meeting to discuss this and so if there are any questions that you've got about that, certainly, you know, direct those to Bryant, Mr. Kite, Ms. Phipps, and then at a future meeting, presumably the meeting in April, you will be able to finalize this. My impression that it's already within an economic revitalization area, is that correct, Bryant?
Right.
Okay, and so usually we would do like three meetings, a general discussion, those two required meetings, because we don't need to put this into one of those ERAs, we can do this within two meetings. I know as part of this overall discussion, there's a variety of incentives that have been discussed, but this is also, there's some moving parts on the economic development agreements, I don't know if Bryant or Mr. Kite wanted to speak to that and just give the council an update?
Yeah, I would be happy to, Grant, and I'm glad you mentioned that. So that is a follow-on item that we will have and hopefully, I think we very well should have that by April. I know we're working back and forth with the representative for the four operating companies, so Lisa Lee has been, with Ice Miller's been working with Grant and myself on that, the economic development agreements for the four operating companies, we will have one with Strongbox Commercial as well. So you're not done with paperwork just yet, we're gonna have probably quite a bit more in April. We were hoping to have those economic development agreements by this meeting, but I think there's one provision that we're kind of still negotiating on, going back and forth, as it relates to the operating companies, we haven't gotten to yours yet, so. So anyway, yeah, that, that will be coming and as Grant mentioned, the ERA, you guys established that economic revitalization area when you approved the abatements for the four operating companies, so that, that step's already been done.
Right, this is the standard abatement that we nor, that we normally would use, the 10-year.
So this is actually, this is actually a 10-year, 100% abatement for 10, for those 10 years, right? And the reason behind that, so Paul mentioned the tax increment financing, when we initially got into our discussions, we were talking about the same thing, committing 100% of that tax increment that they create from this project towards a bond issue that would be able to go into the project. As we worked, continue to work with Strongbox, they felt it was more appropriate for the abatement. So from, from our standpoint, it's six in one hand, half dozen the other, we were either looking to give 100% of that abatement, or excuse me, of the taxes that they create towards a bond issue, or we're just, they're just not paying those with the abatement, right? So after, in year 11, they will incur taxes, property taxes, real property taxes in that year, so in full, their full property tax life.
In year 11?
Year 11, yeah.
Hundred percent.
Hundred percent, yep, yep, yep.
The other question I have is, in a perfect world, when would you have this building completed and ready to start producing product?
It needs to be completed and online by 1st of January 2025. So rest of this year, all next year, be under construction and they'll be essentially bringing the, the clean rooms online in the fourth quarter of '24, so that they're actually producing microchips in '25. And it's possible, for a side note, it's probable that they're gonna move some equipment into a temporary space here before the end of the, of the year to start producing on a small scale, to be, to move activities here.
Thank you. Sounds like it's a pretty tight schedule.
Very, very challenging. And, and same, at the same point, on the utility side, that the Upland Science and Technology Foundation is working with a $10 million ready grant to upgrade utilities, so water sewer need to be upgraded, electricity, all that's doing, going on and Bryant's heavily involved in, in that.
There have been some challenges with the sanitary sewer, right, Paul?
Yeah.
So that's basically what's out there currently is, correct me if I'm wrong, it's a 50,000 gallons per day package plant, to accommodate the needs that they have for their facility alone, that needs to be quadrupled, right?
Correct.
Let alone the existing usage in the park and all the growth that Paul and his team are talking about following on.
Yeah.
So it's a major upgrade, what they're talking about initially is possibly tapping onto the basis sanitary sewer system as a temporary solution and then moving, in the meantime, building a full new wastewater treatment plant up at Westgate. But the good news is, and this is all very preliminary, right, the good news is that that temporary solution isn't for not, right, that's, so the hope is that the town of Crane could be able to, that additional infrastructure for that temporary solution would enable the town of Crane to convert over onto this new wastewater treatment plant, which has been a goal of the basis, to my understanding, for quite some time, so.
Any other questions for Paul?
So these, these numbers that we've seen in this preliminary documents here, so is, it reflects 100,000 square foot building, but in reality, so now we're talking 125,000 square foot.
Yes.
Building. All, any, all documents coming forward are gonna reflect?
As soon as we have, yeah, as soon as we have a approved plan, we'll just add that to it and amend it to show the 125 and whatever the adjusted tax increment would be.
Okay, okay.
I guess we need a motion to proceed with SB 1 to approve in April's meeting, or discuss it and then hopefully approve.
So moved.
I'm Mike, second by?
Second.
Matt, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Guess we'll see you in April.
Great, look forward to it, thank you.
Could be around for a little bit?
Yeah, I'll stick around.
Were you gonna say something?
No.
Oh, okay.
You've heard enough.
Do you wanna stay after, Brian? Next, the IRX update?
Good morning.
Good morning, I'm Vanessa Phillips, I'm the project manager for the IRX program, which is the Integrated Reentry and Correctional Support Program, which is housed inside the Davies County Security Center. And when we first met many months ago, I promised to come back with updates and I provided you all with reports from June to now, well, without February's report, because that was just administered in the beginnings of March. But I just wanted to come, answer any questions, provide any updates or give you any information that you might like. I don't know if you've all had a chance to review the reports that I've provided you.
There's a lot of data there.
There is. So to highlight some of the key data areas that might not make sense, so all of these data points, every single site, so there's five sites around the state, are submitting this data to Mental Health America of Indiana and the Division of Mental Health and Addiction. And if you remember, this is a project directly out of the governor's office and the reason why this data is so important is because right now they're looking at partnering with other jails around the, around the state and they've had tremendous amount of interest. I've actually spoken with the Sullivan County Sheriff about this program and Sheriff Allison has also discussed this program and the success we've seen already in the seven, eight months we've been operating. We've been able to have the Indiana BMV visit our jail twice in the seven months we've been operating and they plan to visit the jail again in June. And with those visits, we've been able to obtain 80 updated identification cards or driver's license for currently incarcerated inmates, so that when they leave the facility, they have some form of identification to help them hopefully obtain a job here in Davies County. Those are at no cost to the individual. I was able to secure a grant through the local coordinating council to pay for those individuals that might still have their driving privileges, so they went loose then, when they left the security center. We've also been able to obtain about 30 to 35 birth certificates for individuals who had lost those prior to incarceration and we're continuing to work with other local health departments to be able to keep obtaining birth certificates for individuals. We've been able to partner with the Davies County Health Department and the Knox County Health Department to get those documents actually for free, one copy that we're able to put into the individual's property. We also have a partnership with Covering Kids and Families, which is a health resource navigator, and she visits our jail every Friday to help ensure the individuals are enrolled in coverage and that when they leave the facility, they have temporary coverage to be able to obtain the healthcare needs that they might have with primary healthcare and behavioral healthcare services. So she has seen pretty much the whole jail population, which right now is roughly 150 individuals, so we've ensured that all of them have either completed applications with the Indiana Medicaid program or their information is up to date, so that when they leave, there's no barriers of accessing that type of care. We've also implemented group programming. My team is trained in an evidence-based model called Matrix, it's a modality that a lot of clinical facilities use, but what's unique to our program is it's facilitated by peer recovery coaches and we've been able to have roughly 40 individuals successfully complete the 52 module course thus far and we've just started our next group of individuals, which is another 30 to 40 people. And we run groups every single day that were in the jail, so Monday through Friday, and then we also do a Wellness Recovery Action Support Group on Tuesdays and then we bring in community partners, like I had identified the Indiana BMV Health Resource Navigator, and then we work closely with our community-based peer recovery program and Real Recovery, which is our recovery cafe, connecting to people to supportive services. We've helped individuals obtain employment when they've been released from the security center, connected them with recovery, housing, and try to keep all of those things here locally in the community, so that way we can continue to support them and make sure they're successful.
How receptive are the inmates in terms, do they understand, do they grasp the, what you're trying to do for them?
I think so, we had our site visit, our kind of midway site visit in January where the state came down and kinda talked with our different community partners to gather some reciprocal data that's not shown in the reports that I gave you, talking with our community partners, and they reported back that they received nothing but positive feedback, some things from our jail commander around the jail population being more de-escalated, having a more, a positive engagement with her correctional staff, decrease in, you know, fights and arguments or lockdowns since we've been engaged in the program within the jail. So different things like that, that our data might not necessarily capture in numbers that we can track, but that's observed daily within the interactions of the jail. Yeah, any other questions?
But the, you noted some barriers to getting your job done, one was technology and if you've defined the other or not, how, how are you doing with overcoming those?
Yeah, so with the help of, of the sheriff and, and some funding that they were given, we were able to, to overcome most of those barriers, which as you know, the jail's made of cement and a lot of metal, so getting internet has been, had been a challenge in the very beginning, but as of this point, that's no longer a barrier, we've been able to extend the wifi and extend routers to make our job, which is not the same as a correctional officer, you know, you're, we're inputting data, we're using cell phones and laptops to be able to help connect ourselves to the outside world while those that are incarcerated aren't, and that all comes with that barrier, but that, that has been corrected, yes.
How about some implementation, can you give us some ideas of when some of these things are gonna be coming?
So you might be referring to like the SIM Intercept Model, so that, I don't know if any of you are familiar with the SIM Intercept Model, but it's a, a justice modality that looks at SIM Intercept 0 through 5 and that involves our community partners with the courts, law enforcement, first responders, and then peer recovery services, community corrections, probation. And so our program is, it falls within SIMS Intercept 2 through 4, which is incarcerated, incarcerated reentry population. So we're starting to look at how we can work more closely with the courts, like the prosecutor's office, public defenders and the judge to work on more, what's the word I wanna use, more unique ways of helping people reintegrate into the community. You know, the typical process of someone that's incarcerated is they come in and they have the option, if they can, to bond out, so they're immediately released, or they go for their initial hearing and they start to go through that process. So we're, from our standpoint, we're starting to look at, you know, what are some treatment options that we can offer to individuals versus just a traditional bond, or what are some more safeguards that we can offer to individuals like recovery, housing or community monitoring, if they're going to be released to the community, that we might be able to help facilitate from a peer standpoint, but also from a, a treatment standpoint as well. So those are all conversations we continue to have, we have a jail management meeting that meets monthly, I, the prosecutors have been awesome with communicating with myself and my staff about different individuals and how we can help them, so really it's just kind of fine honing that, those conversations and making them more intentional sometimes.
How, how long is it gonna continue, the program?
So currently, we're still in the pilot period, this grant ends May of this year and there's already conversations of continuation, so all five sites are expected to continue in year two funding, whether that's through grant funding through the state or what's called Recovery Works Funding, which is funding that the state has allocated for a billable process that makes programs more sustainable. So either way, all five sites have the expectation that we will continue into year two. And so my goal is, or my hope is that at the end of the year I will, or the end of this grant year, excuse me, I will provide you with more of an update and hopefully some more reports from the state.
Is it, you got an entourage back, I, I recognize some faces, but do you wanna introduce?
The rest of my team is here to present on the opioid settlement.
Okay, okay.
But we are all collaborative partners, we all work together, so.
Okay, awesome.
Yeah.
You're not done with them yet.
So that's my portion, I appreciate it, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next up, Brian and Laura, on the Davies Advances Recovery Opioid.
Morning.
Morning.
Quite a name for our group, so I'm here for DayRec Group, which is the Davies Advances Recovery Access Consortium. This group was formed, I'd say a couple years ago now, when we first started getting grant opportunities for opioid crisis, I got, I got a grant for the last three years for that and the last two years we've had a grant from HERSA, so that's been going well. So we created this group and this was kinda before my time, Diana was involved strongly with helping create this group. A lot of groups have come into this since the creation of it. When we learned that the opioid settlement funding had been deposited into the county fund, it's not in the general fund, it's just kind of in a separate fund, as you guys probably have seen that, we worked really hard to come up with a couple of proposals for that first set of funding. We are expected to receive multiple payments for multiple years for this specific funding. As, the, the amounts can change as far as what they had put out there, but total over several, several years, we should receive about $286,000 in unrestricted funds and about $668,000 in restricted funds, and that's over the next several, several years. That's quite a bit of money that's allocated just for, you know, groups like ours that we're, we're all working with the same population, that's why, you know, this group was formed so we could all help with the same people that we're working with. So I submitted to you guys the Exhibit E, it's a pretty lengthy document, this goes in support with the restricted funding proposal. The only thing the restricted funds can be used for are things that align with that exhibit, so it's things like prevention, education, treatment, recovery, things of that nature. We've kinda mapped that out in that proposal that you see and, you know, Indiana University has helped us with, with a lot of this and they've been really great getting us to try to get all these funds, cuz we had some big requests from all of our groups and, you know, there are, there is gonna be more money throughout the following years, but to align it with the 142,000. years, but to align it with the $142,354.23, we got it down to the penny. And is that the correct amount? That's verifying again, that is the correct amount in the restricted fund, correct? Okay. And then the restricted is a little over $60,500 in the restricted fund?
The restricted is the 142,000 number.
I meant restricted.
The restricted is the 60,546.
Yes, yes, yes. Okay, thank you. So in the proposal for the restricted funding, you'll see we have eight groups in that, Community Corrections being one of those, that's for training. We have IRACs in there for training as well, Davies County Peer Reservices, Davies County Peer Recovery Services, it's Brian Peaks Group, West Boggs Park, Nathan, you guys know Nathan. He's, he kind of came in towards the end of some of our meetings, so we wanted to include him in there because, and I didn't realize this, but after talking to him, all of the great things with the prevention with kids that, you know, he brings to the park. High School, Jenny Lee Council, First Stigma Stoppers, Youth First, I don't think we have a representative here from Youth First today. Davies Community Hospital, Shayna Bradley. And this is for a clinical social worker that you're requesting. That's just part of that funding. And James Hay from Real Recovery is here today as well. So that's in the restricted funding proposal. Are there any questions about that before I talk about the unrestricted proposal?
Yeah, and I didn't have time to read through all of it.
It's a lot.
Yeah, it's a lot, but one thing that did stick out to me was the expanding the fringe service program.
We aren't requesting that. That's just in the exhibit.
Okay, we don't have to worry about that then.
No, no. We've had many talks about that.
The commissioner's.
Yeah.
Down.
Yeah. Yeah, for years ago.
It would have to be.
Yeah, this is just the exhibit that the state put out that the restricted funds could support. So, and that's not in our proposal at all.
Oh, very good, okay.
No, no, no. We tried to map out exactly what, you know, we would be using, what we'd be using those for, you know, and then when, when we, when and if we do get this funding approved, you know, there's going to be guidelines that we have to follow, like reporting to the state. So we're requesting that each entity or department that gets these funds, you know, they're going to have to report that to this DayRAC group, and DayRAC will submit that to the state. Because if they're not meeting the specific guidelines, if they're not meeting the deadlines, we will request that they don't receive any further funding from this fund, because it's very specific and detailed and things have to be done correctly.
We haven't received those guidelines yet from the state. How are we reporting? We're not yet.
But for the, you know, people that have done budgets like myself or Community Corrections, I'm going to treat that the exact same. It's going to be in a separate fund away from, you know, the rest of the funds, it's going to be specifically for that. And then, you know, it'll be detailed item line budget and reporting and things like that, so they can see exactly where the money went and how much.
Count four.
Are you going to be doing eight training at the other high schools besides Washington High School?
Um, I think Youth First is going to cover that in all the schools. They just got a huge grant, I think like $250,000 grant for putting Youth First workers in all the schools in Davies County.
Right now, Youth First has this.
Yes. Yes, and so, you know, we put more money in there for them for that, and like I said, they just got that, they just got awarded that grant. So they're doing great work as well with trying to work with prevention.
But that's not part of this?
That's not part of this. That's a whole separate thing.
The money that they asked for, actually they come in kind of late, but they just lost the one person that they had that we were working with. They came in on this, they asked that this amount of money would actually go to help provide more training to the social workers they already have.
And I think they introduced themselves at the state of the county, member list. Got to meet that group there.
Okay. And I know that Perry had spoke at the Davies County address a little bit and kind of explained what Youth First was, and this settlement funding got brought up, I think by Joe?
Yeah, Joe brought it up at the end, and then, yeah, we got to meet them.
Yeah.
It was good.
So I wasn't there, I heard, I watched you guys live on YouTube, but I was glad that that was brought up, because I, you know, reached out to them, because we hadn't heard from, Janae, I think, was working with Youth First. So we actually reached out to Youth First to see if they wanted to, you know, be a part of this, to get them some more funding. So any questions about the restricted proposal? I mean, in this, like I said at the bottom on the impact statement, this, these requested funds from both of these proposals will not affect the county's budget, because it's specifically in a separate fund for, you know, groups like ours.
We always liked that.
Yeah, I know, I thought you'd like that, that's why I added that in there.
Good plug you put in.
You want me to move on to the unrestricted? Okay, so the unrestricted proposal, we, some of the same people are in here, there's a couple of different people in this one. The first one was for Davies County Community Corrections. Our vehicle, we just need a new vehicle. And I think I talked to a couple of council members about that in the past, that our vehicle is just, it's falling apart, 17 years old, heat doesn't work, it's just, we just need a new one. So I talked to Gary a little bit about like fleet pricing, and that was around $42,000 for a brand-new fleet pricing vehicle. Don't know if that's what I'll go with, or if I'll get a used one, I was just throwing, you know, that in there as the top number. My second thing is for bulletproof vests for new case managers that go out on field visits. Things are, you know, we have violent offenders on our, on our caseload, and they always take an officer with them, but an officer's wearing a bulletproof vest, but they aren't. So I just want to make sure every case manager has, has protection when they go out, just for safety. So again, that's, these, these things in this unrestricted fund proposal can be spent on, on anything. It doesn't have to be aligned up with that exhibit. So that's why these things are in this proposal. I put Davies County Sheriff's Department in there to help with some expenses if needed, and West Boggs Park for any expenses that weren't covered under his proposal for the restricted fund, which again, won't take money out of the council when he comes to ask you guys. Purdue Extension, they didn't put any money in the first proposal, that's just to help support any services they, they need. Youth First, another thousand dollars for them to help support schools. And Bethany Christian Church, they have a Celebrate Recovery meeting, I think twice, Roland Benson's and here. So they're expanding. Courtney Fields, she does a lot of, I don't know if anybody knows Courtney, but she, she prepares a lot of the meals, like and pays for it herself, not always donations, so just a little something to, to help her. And she was, I talked to her last night, and she was appreciative that I put her in that proposal. That's, and again, that's not affecting the county's budget, so it's even better, I don't have to come ask you for a brand-new vehicle.
Your current fuel oil changes that source of the vehicle, that's in your original budget, or does that run through Gary's?
The fuel cost, that's through Community Corrections.
Good.
And that, that won't change, that won't change. Hopefully it has better gas mileage, the vehicle that we get. I mean, ours is 17 years old, and it's a lot of maintenance on that thing, so.
Is it, I mean, do you actually need a pickup?
Um, we would like at least an all-wheel-drive SUV, just because we do help with transportation of people, and we're talking out in the back roads of Davies County, don't know what kind of road you're going to get on, and for a field officer, he's going, you know, all over the place, so we don't know, like where we'll end up, but definitely not a car. Well, maybe if it's an all-wheel-drive car, but it would be nice for a sport utility vehicle, like we have, just because we have like supplies in the back and drug screens and things like that to keep handy.
You need some clearance, but Gary, you'll help on that?
He helped me with the pricing, he helped, he helped looked it up and everything, and I think you.
If you order today, you'll get.
That's what he said. He's like, it takes a while if you order like through the government fleet, you know, or just anything. So, you know, it's just.
Special service.
Yeah. And, and like I said, it doesn't even necessarily have to be that. I mean, I could go to Ford or Chrysler here in town and find something appropriate for us.
Gary, do you have anything up and coming that's, like we talked about previously, you know, like for the airport? Is there anything that could help them out in the meantime?
Probably not.
Because you've already went through that. Did you catch it?
Yeah.
Sure.
I don't know their driving.
Right.
Ask for five.
Gotcha.
Yeah, I don't even, like I said, the, it doesn't necessarily have to be a Durango or an Explorer. That was just, we just had a conversation on.
All-wheel drive to get you there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Just, I mean.
I'll get with you. I'll get with you, and everybody involved will take care of that.
Okay, just something, just, because it's, I don't know, I mean, even the gear shift sticks sometimes, and I'm like, okay, that's not, that's not a good thing. We couldn't put, we couldn't put it in park for a while, like they had to have somebody come at a place we were at and find out how to put the vehicle in park, because it wouldn't. That was with our last field officer that that happened, so.
It should qualify for.
Gotcha. Thank you.
And we do have like the county government plate currently on that. Our insurance goes through, here's your insurance.
Any other questions for Laura?
I guess, I guess the bottom line is, step back and look at, I mean, we've got free money, so to speak, and it looks like you guys have got a pretty good plan to try to utilize it and to help benefit our, our local communities, and so we wish you well and hope that everything goes well with it, because.
That's the thing, whenever you get money, like if you want to try and have an impact in as many different areas as you can.
Exactly.
You know, and that sounds like what you've got planned here, so.
Yeah, I mean, we've had, over the last two months, we've met like six or seven, and sometimes even multiple times a week, just phone calls or, or something, just trying to nail this down. Like I said, there's going to be more money each year, and so it may be different groups of this consortium coming next year to ask for something else, or to fund training or something for their department or organization. So that's the beauty of that, is it's just going to be a continuous, like these were too long, like it was a lump sum, like the first, this was 2022 and 23 payment together, this amount, these amounts. So, you know, I think the next year's like 30,000 or 40, and then so on, so. But it's a good thing, because it's going to help, you know, sustain some good things in the community.
How, how, how are you going to measure the impact of it? How do we know? I mean, you say it's going to help, and I believe, I believe it will, I mean, you're attacking a lot of areas, but how do you measure that?
Right, I know, it's, it's a lot.
Like the program that I have.
Uh, like the pro, the program I have with Davies County Peer Recovery Services and that, that Vanessa has in the jail, I also am over that program. So like the reporting that she does, all that detailed reporting every month, we could give all those reports to you, that all falls under that, like she's receiving money, my program receives money, Shayna does a very detailed report to the state, because they're all under grants. So with a grant, you know, you have to report everything in very detailed. And so this money goes to those programs to help support them and the coaches that they have in recovery. And I know Jimmy is over Real Recovery, and they have to do with their café program, they have to do, they're under a grant, so they have to do reporting. So all those reports, we could supply to you guys with each, how it's having an impact each month, we could get those to you guys each month.
Yeah, I don't know that I need it every month, but.
Yeah.
Like quarterly or something.
Yeah, we come in quarterly and give you guys a report.
Yeah, it could be the DayRAC report of.
Yeah.
Yeah, all these.
Yeah, we could definitely do that, to keep you guys updated. And then also when we start reporting, or when they start sending reports in, when they get the money to DayRAC.
We would share those with you.
Then we could share that with you, yeah.
The financials.
Do a combined report of how it's affecting, plus all the financials.
I mean, because if I don't spend that much on a vehicle, that, that money's, I'm not going to keep that, I'm going to put that back in that, in that unrestricted fund, so it can be available for something else.
Yeah.
I mean, because I'm not just going to keep it if I don't spend it all, because that would only be fair for somebody else to be able to use that.
Sure.
Um, I guess kind of I ask today that these two proposals at least be approved, so we know how to proceed with the auditor's office with the appropriations next month, I assume that would be. I don't know how, because, you know, there's so many different agencies involved, I just want to kind of have a few meetings with the auditor's office if these two proposals are accepted today, so we can map out how we want to present those at the meeting next, next month, so everybody's just on the same page and it's just clear and easy and ready to go, so to speak. And so I kind of said, I wanted to get these kind of approved, so someone didn't swoop in in between now and then, and I had to re-figure some of the, the amounts.
Does that need action? Do we need to prove that? Okay, so we do. So then we do, okay.
So I move, I move we approve their proposed restricted and unrestricted, each, each plan, option, proposal, whatever we want to call it, as presented.
I second that. First, but Aaron, second my mic, all in favor?
Which mic?
Sprinkle. Oh, I didn't see you.
They have a mic down there, it doesn't matter.
That's okay.
Put mics.
Sprinkle's older, you can have.
If you put mic, you're going to get it.
Well, we really appreciate it, and, you know, we're going to probably bug Jen and Misty to death over the next month. I apologize in advance for all the emails you're going to probably get, but we just want to make sure, you know, because we've never had to deal with this type of fund before. So being able to know exactly how to appropriate them and just stay within the guidelines, which I know she will, but keeping us informed and everything.
Before we leave, since we got cut off the mic, mic issue, we didn't have a vote, so. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Now it's official.
All right.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks for all the hard work and putting all this together, guys.
Everybody, it was definitely a team effort, and even people that aren't here have been working on it, so.
Great.
I appreciate it, and we'll probably be neck, back next, well, we will be back next month, so.
See you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Kelly and Kathy.
Good morning.
Morning, morning. I'm here to ask, many of you may or may not know, we have a TB program that started about a year ago, and in the last year, we've seen 29 patients, most of them Davies County born and raised.
And when you, when you say TB, we're talking.
Tuberculosis.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, tuberculosis, tuberculosis. So over the last few years, we've had and noticed a need for a provider in our community. When someone is suspected to have tuberculosis, many of them don't have money or insurance, or if they do have money and insurance, it's still hard to find a doctor who's comfortable with taking care of tuberculosis. It's not an easy thing to find, or an easy thing to treat. So working with the state over the last couple of years, we finally were able to put a program together. The state approved it last year, and we received grant funding to get it started. And over the last year, we've seen 29. Many of them are still in, they take medication for it, pills for it. Many of them are still in treatment, however, we've been very successful, and everyone has so far that has completed this, the treatment has completed successfully and has been, gotten rid of TB. TB is completely treatable with medication, but it has to be caught, and it has to be tested appropriately, and it has to be treated appropriately.
So has there, has there been a, an influx of TB? I mean, I remember as a kid getting the vaccine and all that stuff, but yeah, I haven't heard about it now forever.
Yeah. TB, you know, the goal many years ago was that we would be done with TB by this time, and unfortunately, that hasn't happened. Some of it is due to immigration, but most of our cases. Yeah, TB, you know, the goal many years ago was that we would be done with TB by this time and unfortunately, that hasn't happened. Um, some of it is due to immigration, um, but most of our cases in Davies County are from people that are born and raised in Davies County that were exposed to TB as a child or as a young adult, um, and never were treated for that. And so we have three cases right now that we're treating that were born and raised in Davies County, were exposed to TB as a child and knew it, but never received treatment for that. And then as you get older, your immune system gets a little weakened and then they came ill with pneumonia or the flu and then their immune system is even more weakened. So the dormant TB then is no longer dormant, because your immune system is weakened, it becomes active. Um, so if they had been treated in the dormant stage, they wouldn't be dealing with active TB now. So that's what we're seeing is an increase in those type of cases.
Are other surrounding counties seeing the same thing?
Um, yes, we see, we, um, since our program started, uh, we also now see people from surrounding counties and yes, they're seeing an increase. A whole part of southern Indiana has seen an increase in active TB. Yeah, so um, anyway, the program started a year ago. Dr. Hoseapple received additional training um, to be the, our local a TB provider. Um, and so he has been doing that for the last year. And most people are seeing, um, depending on what stage they're in, um, and uh, he sees them in the health department and then I see them in their home if they're active, um, until they're no longer active. The biggest thing with TB is they have to take medication for a long time. And if you're like me, I take the medication until I feel better. And then you stop. Well, TB, you can't do that. So our job is to make sure they take the medicine every day. And many times you have to take it for six to nine months. So it's a long time.
Are they contagious?
In the, when they're active, they are, yes. That's why I see them in their home when they're active. And then once they're cleared of active, then they can, you know, go out about. It's been a very successful program and Dr. Hoseapple, um, has been asked to speak at the state, uh, World TB Conference in the next couple of weeks, so um, usually large health departments have this clinic, so we're the first one to be of a small nature. Um, and we treated it. We didn't start out really big like uh, Fort Wayne or Marion County, and we started out very small. And again, it's just educating people to know the signs and symptoms of TB. If they've ever been exposed to tuberculosis as a child, you know, we can do some testing to see if they still, if they have the bacteria and then, you know, treat them before they become active. But it's all funded through the state, the medication is funded through the state. Um, we do have a fund set up for those who do not have uh, insurance to pay for chest X-ray or blood work if needed. So getting to this, the, um, this is already a current line item that we have, but this grant, the ninety-one oh one is changing this year and will become her grant. Um, and so I wanted to add a little extra money in there before it changes, because it'll get really complicated after it changes. So I wanted to add a little bit of extra money and also the caseloads have picked up with the increase of TB and that we've seen. So I wanted to go ahead and move the money over before um, this grant changes into something else.
All, all grant money?
It's all grant money, yes.
Questions? It's, it's the fifth item on the appropriations. Uh, while she's here, we just do that and not? So, I was asking for a motion.
So moved.
First one, Matt. Second by Darren. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Very good. The childhood blood level?
Good morning, gentlemen. Kelly Streeter, the administrator of the health department. Um, this lead isn't the same as TB, um, but it also is something that we're seeing here. Um, the state, through legislature last year, provided grant funding um, through the state department of health, ARPA money, because they expanded blood lead levels that are found in children by the age of one, have to go through a risk management or risk assessment process in the home as well as case management for a period of time to get those blood lead levels down. Um, we have seen a raise in cases due to that legislation. Therefore, we need to pay our on-staff risk assessor, uh, the granted funds to manage each case. It was budgeted last year as I put in my notes, um, but I have to remember grants have to be re-appropriated every year. So here I am, asking for the same appropriation again. Three cases have already been done. Um, we need to pay our case manager. And then moving forward, we'll get, we'll get those cases applied appropriately. We have a, we're gonna see some expanded testing out of our department probably in the next year. Um, we're seeing that the the state of Indiana wants to offer uh, lead testing more often, as we should, to curb lead exposure in children. And we're probably gonna be doing that in-house, um, at multiple events, as well as um, supporting our local providers, physicians, that is.
When you talk about lead exposure, I mean, are you talking like water pipes or paint? What, or both?
Paint, a lot of paint. Um, that's why children are supposed to be lead tested by the age of one on Medicaid. And they should be, like I mentioned, because a lot of children on the floor in older homes here, especially in cities, they get painting in their mouths, it's window seals, it's pretty common, actually.
How come I know it's in older homes? Like how old, like, you know, is there, after a certain date, you figure home's gonna be safe.
Kathy's our lead lady have passed, so she may have.
It was like early eighties when they switched that.
Yeah, it was in the late seventies, early eighties, um, that they wanted that. But a lot of our uh, homes in Washington are older and uh, many of them are rental homes too, so a lot of turnover. And even if they did paint over with the correct paint, they didn't do the proper removal of the old lead paint. And so then all that peels off, so even though they have updated the paint, when it starts peeling and cracking, then the old lead paint is still.
Do we have any uh, opportunity Amish community on, on lead?
We have a very few children in the Amish community that actually get tested. Um, and we've never, we've not had one be elevated that's been tested.
Okay.
Uh, we have high lead levels throughout the county, though. It's not just in Washington.
Yeah.
How do you test a child for it? With a blood draw or?
Um, you can do either, you can do a finger stick or a blood draw. If the finger stick comes back elevated, we currently do finger sticks in the health department, but if a finger stick comes back elevated, then we have to do a blood draw to confirm it. And the reason we check for this is because elevated lead levels can cause mental uh, and developmental disabilities. And that's usually what happens, the children, you know, start, they should be walking and talking and then they don't. And so they take them to the doctor and then they do the testing and come to find out their lead level is elevated.
So that's one more layer of, of work that we're doing, but again, this is, I know we talk a lot about grant money, this is grant money for this purpose. Back to mention what Kathy said, um, it, it, and I hope we can have more discussion soon, but it looks as if in the near future, um, in some format through the state budget agency, we could potentially be looking at, if we opt in, that all of these grants that the health department is seeing through the federal and state government would come, um, instead of grants into one state budget allocation a year, like we see at the highway department and corrections and other formats. So that would be an auditing dream come true. Uh, but we will see where that comes. Any more questions for us?
I got one quick one, it's not related to what you're here for, but how's the COVID cases going right now in the county?
I don't know. The COVID cases, reporting, no one has to report to me if you do a home test. However, um, we still track COVID through, if you go to your doctor's office and get a COVID test and they're positive, those do get reported to me. But if you do a home test, I don't know. Uh, and then they also look at hospitalizations and things like that. Our COVID numbers are low. Thank God our flu numbers have finally dropped down. So we have seen a decrease in COVID case. It's still going around, don't get me wrong. But the numbers aren't high. The flu cases were really high and now they've dropped down too. So I really don't have an accurate number of how many cases there are, but I do know from those people going to healthcare providers in the hospital, they've dropped down.
Right.
How about vaccination? Do people continue to get vaccinated or not?
Um, we pretty much, we still do um, COVID vaccinations um, every day, but they've really dropped off. Um, the state is changing, they're gonna do away with the primary series that we all started out with in beginning and go to like an annual vaccine. So we're in the process of switching over uh, to that the next few months. So we've really had a slack drop off of COVID vaccines.
I would make a motion to approve this lead grant that they got here.
Motion by Mike Sprinkle.
I'll second it.
Second by Tom, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Thank you.
Flat book.
So, you want me to speak?
Yes.
So that is, um.
Alright.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead. I can, but go ahead.
Our um, mapping department, we're kinda, just kinda shifting gears a little bit and I'm taking that within our department. So we collect um, fees for every parcel, uh, per parcel, we collect money, um, when a deed is through the process and I'm able to take that on and use that, those fees for, for the remainder of this year to finish out her salary and then next year, if their budgets, we'll look into ways to change that, but helping out the assessor's office and with some funding in the future with her and I'm just asking to fund that through my office.
She has the money to do that and that money's being saved on the assessor's side. So we just need to, a motion to appropriate that for, for the auditor's side.
So moved.
How does you, Mike?
Alright, first by Darren, second by?
I have a question.
Mike, oh, question.
Yeah, um, so there's fifty-seven thousand in that fund right now, well, according to the stuff I got, we got today. And so are we saving the rest? How, tell us about that.
So that is cash that we're collecting. I won't be able to like, in annual salary, year after year, but I can at least capture and start using that toward that salary, um, at this time. And so, um, prior to January, we did have two mapping um, gals within that department and we are uh, changing that to just one person now. And some of that is to being taken on by another person in my office due to the state has um, gotten rid of our mortgage deductions across. So that's freed up a lot of extra time with one of them, so we'll have a backup, we'll still kinda be able to maintain, but kinda capture that within kind of one and a half people.
Okay, so like last year, we added a person to the?
To our office.
And now we eliminated a person in the?
Correct.
Very good.
Want a clarification?
Yep, no problem, good. I believe it was Darren and Mike.
Right.
Oh, it was Mike then Darren.
Darren, yeah.
Okay, Mike Myers. Alright, additional. Oh, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose. You can tell I'm watching my watch.
Earning your money.
Additional appropriations, county general, we did that with the judge, correct?
Yes.
Edit, th, this appears that it's on here twice. This is for the commons project, but correct me if I'm wrong here, it has to go from the edit to the commons project into the revolving fund and then it can be dispersed.
Correct.
So that's not three hundred thousand, that's a hundred and fifty thousand.
Same, a hundred and fifty.
Yes.
Yeah.
So uh, we'll do those two together.
Make a motion to approve the edit into revolving.
First by Matt.
Second.
Second Darren, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Q and cap, this is basically.
For our house project.
Yep.
So last year, we went ahead and appropriated money and this year, we have not, in order to start um, paying out any services and stuff that we have through Garmont. And so this is just kind of an anticipation and an estimated amount that we're trying to budget for, so as that stuff comes through, that it can hit the processes and they're not waiting extended period of time to get paid.
Questions?
Move to approve both requests there.
Move by Mike Sprinkle.
Second.
Second by Matt, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose. Flat book we just handled. Local health, we handled with Kathy and Kelly. Childhood blood level, we handled with Kathy. And Bobby has been sitting here for an hour and fifteen minutes for the last item on the agenda. We thank you for your patience.
I guess you see, we were, we're needing a little more money for rock and the reason being, I guess, we uh, had some money in our um, construction line item in our budget. Well, we got a pretty good, um, we normally buy our liner, one particular liner in the one, this year, and then another style liner next year. We got a good deal on it in January, so we elected to buy it all. So it took a lot of our, a lot of our money for our rock away, but I don't know if you see that, what, what we're doing with all the stone. We got a new construction coming up next year. And we're using a little different style to use more stone and less dirt, so we're gonna save on soil, which is not very plentiful out there where we're at, so.
Where, where were you getting your soil from?
Uh, on, onsite.
Onsite? And it's cheaper to buy rock than it is?
Well, we're gonna run out of soil is the thing. And uh, eventually, we're gonna either have to haul stone or haul dirt. So this, using this stone is gonna save us about thirty inches of compacted soil on three and a half acres, so. I mean, I think it's gonna pay off. And then we can use a little cheaper, a little cheaper liner, being we're using the stone instead of the compacted soil.
We'll do both of these together. You wanna talk about the compactor?
Yeah, and uh, typically, of course, we hadn't bought a new compactor since oh-six and um, then it was basically, you know, it was basically done where you would um, lease, I guess, or basically leased on and you just, so much a year. Well, I guess this particular year, the interest rate and everything was really crazy. And um, and then our solid lease board elected, uh, we jumped up a size on our compactor to help with our compaction. So we, we applied what we had in our line item towards the compactor, but we fell short and that's what the.
What, what's that phone number?
We're in solid lease, they are not um, on here. They're separate.
The old one that you had from about then, are you trading that in or is that a backup spare?
It's gonna be a spare.
I got a question. It, are you going with the Volvo one that?
The Volvo four fifty.
Okay, and I'm looking through the minutes of this meeting, says something about it has a marine engine?
No, the uh, the Aljon has a Volvo marine engine in it and the, the, what wasn't really enticing about that is on that machine, the, the engine was serviced by somebody and the machine was serviced by somebody else. So if in the event you had issues, um, well, that, I talked to people that had the Aljon, they actually said their, their service guy is in New York City. So it just wasn't really appealing.
So that's uh, that one is not one that you're gonna be buying, okay, alright.
No, the Volvo, right, the Volvo is a Volvo machine.
Gotcha.
And um, and Rudd out of Evansville will service it.
Gotcha, okay, thank you.
So you were gonna keep the other one as a spare? Do we need a spare?
Well, I think the, the idea behind that was is um, a used landfill compactor is basically not very sought after. So basically, they wasn't gonna give you much, nothing for it.
Okay.
And it, you know, was elected to keep it on the job for a little while, you know, maybe six. Absolutely, yes. But it's got ten thousand plus hours, so. But I think if this Volvo, you know, works out good and then maybe we could look to, you know, somebody to buy it from us. You know, we, we got a, another guy said he would buy it, they rebuild them. But, you know, I think it's a good idea to keep it around for uh, for a little while anyway.
We discussed, the board discussed back in December, you know, we could always sell that down the road.
Considerably heavier?
Uh, yes, it's ninety, uh, the, our present compactor is sixty thousand pound machine and the new one, it would be ninety thousand, so. Of course, that drove the price up a little bit also.
And did I see somewhere too in there where they wouldn't give you a trade-in? They just, they just?
The Volvo people did. The Volvo people did offer a trade, but it was, uh, thirty-five thousand and, uh, really that's, you know, nothing really compared to what it's worth.
So we could sell it for more than that then?
Uh, there's a place in Ca, uh, Canada that he actually, he put a bid in on a used machine and he said whether we buy it or not, he would give us fifty-five thousand for it, so.
Okay.
I mean, that was then.
Right.
Yeah, but yeah, I was just concerned as to why we couldn't get any trade on it, but, yeah, so anyway.
I mean, basically, that's, that's almost junk, you know, junk price, more or less, you know?
Yeah. Okay.
Any questions for Mr. Oaks?
And this, this is not in the budget.
We had, um, part, you know, we paid, um, a hundred and some on it that was in the, in our budget, I guess, like I say, uh, the line item for a machine. And it, we just didn't, when we elected to go with a bigger machine and, and I guess, buy it outright, so then we fell a little short.
So then where will this extra money come?
We actually have the money.
They have the cash.
Okay.
Just got appropriate.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a good question. That's a good question, because I was a little confused too.
Thanks for clarification, so, yeah, it makes it easier.
Yeah.
Thanks.
It makes it easier than that. That sounds like a motion.
Let's, uh, yeah, that's a motion.
Motion for Mr. Sprick.
For the stone and the?
Yeah, do them both.
For the stone and the compactor.
Motion by Mr. Sprinkle and a second by Darren, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That is all. Everything else we have is informational purposes.
Thanks, Bob.
I would, we always ask questions from the audience, but that appears to be slimmer and slimmer.
Twiddling.
And I would love to accept a motion to adjourn. So moved. Mike Myers. Mike, Mike Myers first, Mike Sprinkle second. Uh-oh, all in favor, aye?
No, it was Myers.
We have things to sign. You'd be here for a second?
It's just Mike.